Okay, welcome everybody. I'm gonna call the January twenty second, twenty twenty five meeting of the Lacy's Atlantic Commission to order. Roll call, the only one missing tonight is Elliot. Everybody else is here. Spencer's online. Welcome. Robert, would you please do the land acknowledgements?
Sure. We, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of the Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of the land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of those lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of disposition, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend the community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty four.
Thank you. And I want to apologize for my voice. I'm on the tail end of this cold that everybody's gotten. And I'm not contagious anymore, but I don't exactly have my sweet golden tones right now. All right, I'm looking for a motion on tonight's agenda.
So.
Judy?
Second.
Gail. All's in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right. Did everybody look at the meeting minutes? I would look for a motion on those.
Motion approve the meeting minutes?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Post? Awesome. We don't have any members of the public here tonight, although we do have a very esteemed audience. Welcome. Any commission members reports tonight?
Yesterday, I attended a short course on planning through the Department of Commerce. It's about two and a half hours long. It was really interesting. And they have another one coming up in February. So it's all online. They don't have any in-person ones coming up. But it was really interesting. They did the Open Public Meeting Act also. If anyone didn't do it with us, I think we did it in September.
Yeah.
So if somebody missed that meeting, that's a part of that training also.
Okay, so for the next one, would you send that information to Erin so she can email it to the rest of us?
Sure.
Thank you. Anybody else? Oh, Spencer?
Yeah, I wanted to inquire, it's more of a question about what's happening with the traffic circle at Meridian? The one north of the highway?
Meridian and Orion?
Uh, it sounds about right.
One that leads to the Home Depot warehouse?
Yes.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing? Okay. I must have been misinformed from somebody then.
We're referring to the, so they're called roundabouts, not traffic circles. F Y I, but are you referring to the intercity transit project in Meridian and Martin Way?
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, no, that's, City of Lacey is not the lead on that project.
Okeydoke.
It's located in Thurston County and it's, yeah. And they headed up by T R P C.
Yeah, I didn't realize you were asking about that brand new roundabout. That's the county. Intercity Transit is the lead agency on that, but the county will also have information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any department reports?
Yeah, I've got a couple items tonight. I want to first start with kind of continuing the discussion around technology that we had at the last work session. So I know I have a couple of members that weren't here a couple of weeks ago when we went over this. So I'll just kind of briefly mention what kind of what's going on. The iPads that you all have are Generation Three iPads, and they're no longer going to be supported. Just FYI, we're on Generation Ten now. They're so old that they're, yeah, they need to be replaced. And so we had a discussion at the last meeting about possible options as far as what they could be replaced with. And out of that discussion, we kind of came up with three different options. So number one is just to replace them like-for-like with new generation iPads. The second, which the Planning Commission kind of favored, I think, was some kind of other, maybe Windows-related device. Surface, yep. And then number three was the option where you all use your own devices and that we set you up with like a City of Lacey email address on that device. And that's just FYI, that's what all of the other boards and commissions do. The Planning Commission is the only one that has their own city-provided devices at this point in time. So I went back and provided those kind of options to our R I S staff and asked specifically about kind of the Windows device, the Surface, and they do not want to go with that option. In fact, they just basically told me no. The reason is, is that they do prefer the Apple devices because they are easier to, in their words, kind of like secure and locked down from kind of malicious attacks versus they feel like a Windows device is a little bit more open to that. So for what it's worth, basically, they gave kind of, at this point, three options. And actually, you know, it'd be great if the Planning Commission could just have a brief discussion on this and kind of give me direction. And we will go the direction that the majority of the Planning Commission wants to go in. So the three options are, number one, we do switch out of your iPads with a Generation Ten iPads, just as they are as data-enabled. The second option is essentially the same thing, except that we would buy data-enabled iPads, but not enable them with data unless requested by somebody. And so this gets to the question around, like, you know, I asked last time, does everybody have access to like a Wi-Fi, you know, system in their home or something like that? And I think everybody said at that point that they did. And so, you know, at this point, it would be a cost-saving measure to not put data on those iPads at this point. However, if we did in the future have a Planning Commissioner that maybe had limited internet in their home, we could activate that device and give them a data plan. Another alternative would be if we went with those that weren't data-enabled, then, you know, we could do some kind of hotspot or something like that. So at this point, you know, the second option would be, well, we didn't go, we just don't go with a data-enabled iPad. It would save us some money on the devices upfront, and then we could purchase a hotspot in the future for somebody that might need it. The third option is to go with your own devices. The advantage to that is that, you know, you are familiar with whatever that device is that you own and maintain, whether that's your phone or a laptop or something like that. You can get your emails. So just like, you know, if you have a standard mail app, just like, you know, you can add a mail account to that. And so you're getting all your city email through the same email that you would get all your personal email as well. So it wouldn't be like adding additional apps or anything to your phone. It would just be a one-time setup and verification of that information. The downside of that is, and I think, you know, the Planning Commission has had a lot of training on this, is that if you do create any records on your own device that suffer from your email, those records, if they are associated with the Planning Commission, can be subject to open public, the, yeah, public information, so they could be subject to the record's act. And so that means that your own personal device could be subject to a search. So at this point, I'm happy to turn it over to you for discussion. I don't have a preference one way or the other. I'm happy to go whatever direction the Planning Commission would like, but essentially, those are the three options. Number one, data-enabled iPads that we would essentially shut off the data at this point unless somebody in the future would need it. Number two is standard iPads, Wi-Fi only. And then the third would be an owned-device option, so.
Okay, thank you. So we did talk about this pretty extensively at the last meeting. So I'm gonna go around the table and just ask you what your preference would be. So, Gail?
Well, my preference would be to have a separate device, simply because I get a rat load of email.
Right.
But it doesn't have to be data-enabled.
Yeah, I would agree. Option two, I just like keeping the City of Lacey emails on its own thing, so it's just separate from my personal.
Fine.
Same.
Same for me. I don't want anything on my personal device.
True.
I concur.
Spencer? Sounds like we got an unanimous vote.
Okay, so we will go with iPads that are not data-enabled.
Okay.
I appreciate that. I do have one more item. So I wanted to, you have an updated schedule at the end, very end of your very long packet, that, and I wanted to kind of let you know what's happening here in the near future. So we've got the joint meeting with the city councils scheduled for Tuesday, February eleventh. That's the next meeting for the Planning Commission. The, at this point, what we're anticipating is that the joint meeting will be the first part of that meeting, so probably about the first hour. The second hour will be more of an education with the council around things that are happening with our comprehensive plan. So very similar to the briefings that you all had in December around the housing, transportation, and climate elements. So there's no reason for you to stick around for that second half if you don't want to. So anticipated at this point that you'll at least attend the first hour of that meeting at six o'clock here on Tuesday, February eleventh. Which brings me to, the reason we're kind of letting you go too is that the next night, February twelfth, is a regular Planning Commission meeting night, but it's going to be an open house. And so it'll be a drop-in open house from six to eight PM here in this room. My recommendation would be to get here, I don't know, ten to fifteen minutes early, so about five forty-five, and expect that you'll be here probably until eight, if at all possible. We understand if you've got other commitments, feel free to leave or do what you need to get done that night. But the idea with the open house is that it's going to be a drop-in open house, and it'll be very similar to those that might have been at the open house that we held at Salish Middle School on the neighborhood commercial stuff a couple of years ago at this point. So it'll be boards around the room, and the idea is that we'll have Planning Commissioners kind of stationed around the room to engage in discussion around various topics. So we will have boards related to the various elements, so transportation, housing, economic development, climate change, land use. And we will place you strategically around the room, and then your job that night is to kind of facilitate discussion with the folks that do drop in. And, you know, at the end, what we'll do is, you know, we'll have those discussions, and then we'll have some time at the following meeting at the end of February to kind of debrief on what you heard that night. So on the meeting on February twenty-sixth, we'll have some time on that agenda to debrief from the open house. So, any questions on that?
So the meeting with the council, is that a meeting or a work session?
It's a work session.
Work session.
Yep. So they'll probably move the tables to kind of the U shape in the middle of the room. And it does, you know, just the way the council operates, it does feel like the Planning Commission are guests at the council meeting. So we'll do our best to try to overcome that, and maybe talk to the chair and maybe the mayor about ways that we can get some dialogue to occur between, and some information sharing between the Planning Commission and the council. So a lot of times, that seems to be kind of a difficult thing, is to get the Planning Commission to feel comfortable in sharing information at a council meeting.
Well, they used to, when I was on council, for this meeting every year, the clerk always kind of, they put out the name placards so that we were all interspersed. So it wasn't like all council on one side of the table and all Planning Commission on the other, and that helped a lot.
They did that last time we were with them.
Yeah, we did that. I would assume that they're going to do the same for this meeting.
Great.
Yep, that's the end of my report.
Awesome. We have no public hearing, no new business, old business. So our good buddy Tom brought his own cheer section tonight. So the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. So who's ready to talk about water valves and step spoons?
And wrenchers.
Tonight, though, I would like to take a moment just to recognize the people that came here. These are, these are the folks that actually wrote these changes, and I'm just the person that gets to present them. So John Dunlap is here, Nate Endly, Brandon McAllister, Justin Bellis, Roger Dickinson, Joey Etter, and then Scott Egger, the Public Works Director's here, and he does help out. So just for, this is the fourth meeting that we've had. We've done general, the Public Works considerations. We did transportation. We did stormwater. And then this meeting, we're covering water and sewer, which are actually two of the bigger chapters that we have. So the Development Guidelines is a document that we use for our regulation when developers come in to know how are we going to design our projects and how are we going to construct them. So those are the main components of it that you're seeing. So there are a lot of nuts and bolts and details in there that kind of apply. Tonight, what we're going to do is I had sent out the both chapters to you guys to read ahead of time. We're going through twelve of the items that I felt were like the, you know, the biggest changes that we'd want to talk about. But when we get done with it, if you have questions at the end, we can, any of the other changes that were made, we can try to address those as well. So, but in the interest of time, we're just going to be like at twelve, so. So did that go on the air?
No.
No. Can you just let me know if you want me to type that in, page number?
Six twelve. Please.
Six twelve?
Yep.
Six.
Or just twelve. Okay, so the first one starts at the bottom, and what it's talking about is cover over water lines. So usually, we have forty-two inches of cover over a water main, but sometimes we have issues where you're going to have topography that doesn't really allow you to make that cover depth. So with approval of the Public Works Director, you will be able to perhaps reduce the cover over a line. So, but when that happens, it will require ductile iron pipe to be installed. So that's a, ductile iron is one of our strongest pipes, so that if you hit it with a backhoe or excavator, it's not going to break. So that's the first change. Did you want me to ask for questions on each change as we go along, or?
No, this group is pretty assertive at raising the hand, so I'm watching the tables, so.
Okay.
Is there a criteria, or have you seen this happen? Like, is it less than one percent, less than half of one percent? Like, just kind of give us a ballpark?
Yeah, it's probably below ten percent. It's like rare cases because we want our water lines to stay at constant depth so that whenever you're, anybody's going out there and locating and digging, they're going to kind of think, well, okay. Yeah, it should be at forty-two inches. The other thing we did that is a minor change in there is we changed the, there's tape that goes above it, and we moved that so it's two feet above the pipe. Before, it was from the top, and what would happen is people would be digging and get caught up in it. And so now we said, well, let's just move it down consistently two feet above, and then if you hit there, you know you're really close to the pipe. So.
Thank you. What's the standard pipe? Is it PVC?
There's different, ductile iron, PVC, those are the two that we're using for a bit, so.
It depends on that. Everything above ten inches required to be ductile.
Okay, is that because it's under higher pressures, or is that?
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's, ductile is a stronger, longer life.
All right, how about fourteen?
We put it at about fourteen. Look at you already. Is it cost prohibitive to use that ductile everywhere? Is that why it's PVC otherwise?
You know, some agencies only allow ductile, some allow PVC everywhere. The standard's been around three days to me, so.
Usually ductile iron, you know, it does flip-flop sometimes, like with the price of gas and everything. So if petroleum went higher, sometimes the, but not very often, the PVC would be higher. But usually ductile iron is more expensive, you know, so, and that's why we drew the line at twelve inches. So a lot of times what it'll do, and we're getting in the weeds a little bit, but whenever we have any project that comes up, they will do modeling, so they'll contact Brandon McAllister. He'll model the system and let them know, for your fire flow and what you need on this site, you can go with this size pipe, you know. So if we can go under twelve and save the developer money, we will, you know. But if we can't, then it's going to be ductile iron, so.
Thank you.
And Ryan started us in the weeds, I just went there.
That's okay. But Erin has told me.
Keep on track.
Okay. So this is one that it's, and I will admit, this is one that I'm not a hundred percent up to speed on. But whenever we are flushing lines, sometimes what happens is you'll turn off a line, and you won't exactly, it won't turn off. And so to make sure that the line is actually turned off, we are going to, we have the requirement for, you have a temporary blow-off and a sampling of the, at the end of the main. Ooh, I'm going off track here. No, this is just flushing, sorry. We have another one coming up that it's talking about whenever you're pining into mains, you have to make sure that the lines turn off. This is just one of our changes that's talking about what you need for blow-offs at the end of lines. So, anyway, not as exciting as I thought. Twenty-six? So this one, it's not really a huge change, but it's kind of shocking. So through, you know, COVID and supply chain issues and all that, we found out that our bigger meters used to, to ten weeks to get a meter, like three inches and larger. Now we're up to four months. So, yeah, so we have to let people know upfront, like when we're doing projects, like, hey, if you, you know, let's figure out those meters upfront, like right at the beginning of the project, and then you can start ordering them. Or we can order them, so we have them for you. So, anyway, just to, that was kind of an easy shocker. Twenty-seven, they could probably roll there. This is, this is for, so when we have service lines into buildings, so this is more for like larger buildings, like warehouses and all that. You'll have a service line that goes into the building. In the past, we've had some problems with leaks, and so if the line started leaking, we wouldn't have a way to shut it off. So now any service lines that are two inches or larger in diameter, they get a valve, so we can turn it off and control the water easier.
So Tom, do you want to maybe just kind of briefly just describe, so there's water mains and then service lines, right? And so kind of what's the difference?
Yeah, so the water main is a trunk line that's usually in the road, and then off of that, you'll have a service line for a building. So, or you'll have this for your single-family resident or for commercial, industrial, all that. So again, for smaller lines, for a single-family, it's an inch and a quarter, is that right? So, inch and a half? Okay, so that valve come over from the main to your service box, and then from your service box into your house. But for industrial and commercial, they can get larger, so. All right. Just going to go down to it. This is one that you all might find pretty interesting. So nowadays, we have more accessory dwelling units. And so one of the things that we deal with with people is how do you meter them? Okay, so one of the metering things you can do is you can take your, you have your existing service to your house, and from the back of that service, you can take that over to your ADU and supply it, okay? But the other one is people want a separate meter. And so when we first started doing this, it was more like when people were putting in ADUs, it was a, like a mother-in-law's house is, you know, what they used to call them. And so it was just a family member living in the backyard, and they didn't really care how they did it. But it's evolved into, hey, we're going to put two rentals on a piece of property, and so we want to have them separately metered and all that. So this is just giving the, this is what we've been doing for years on how we determine what you're doing. So if you want to go off the back of meter, you do it, there's no extra costs. If you want a separate meter, then you're paying full connection fees for that, so, because it's really acting as a separate unit.
I was curious, does the sewer for ADUs, does that connect back into the main house? Or does that go all the way out to the main sewer line?
It'll usually wind, so like you'll have somewhere where the, you'll have your sewer lateral that comes off the main and comes up to your house, and usually they'll intercept that and, you know, take it around to wherever the ADU is. So, so they will usually converge onsite and then head out to the road.
So I'm curious, Tom, you know, one of the things that got brought up at council last night is, you know, we have state requirements, and Jennifer's mentioned this in briefings with the Planning Commission before, that, you know, six months into next year, we have to allow up to two ADUs per lot. So, you know, I'm curious, would you still have enough water pressure, et cetera, if you were to stub off the main house to two ADUs? Is this still something that's feasible, or do we need to account for that?
We're going to account for it. So like when we started doing, all this was moving forward this year, and earlier in the process, I had a conversation with Vanessa Dolby, and we talked about, when do we actually want to address this? So she gave me the pass on what it's going to look like next time. But for, you know, if you can have a fourplex and two thousand square foot ADUs on a piece of property, it's not going to look the same as this. So it'll be different, but I don't know what it is right now.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. And then the last one is thirty-six, please. Yeah, so this is, it's kind of echoed in a few places in this chapter, but it's talking about finding the suitable discharge location for flushing. So imagine if you have a twelve-inch line or an eight-inch line, and you have to flush it for how long?
Depends, but probably a couple hundred thousand gallons typically.
Yeah, hundred thousand, couple hundred thousand gallons of water has to go somewhere. So every once in a while, we'll have this problem where they won't have the location to take that water. So that's why we write, write our requirements in here for, to make sure that they do think that up ahead of time. So like, maybe take it to your storm system or something like that, so that you're not flooding your neighbors, or you're not flooding the road or wherever, so. Okay. So we'll move on to. Yeah, sewer, the more.
It's up there, if you just change it to that.
But.
Okay, so this is one that I consider kind of a, a milestone and a fun one. So, so we have OSS is an onsite septic system. So a lot of times what will happen is we'll have failures. And so one of the good things that Joey and I get to do is we get to give people the bad news of having to connect to sewer and the costs that are associated with it. So what we're seeing nowadays is a lot of the costs are really skyrocketing. And so with the skyrocketing costs, you're looking at like, you know, a significant amount of money that, that's, that your house isn't really worth that much. So we had to kind of come up with a, a line in the sand. So, cause we were looking, we had a couple of them that were like, one of them that was like twenty-five percent of the value of the house. And that's, that's too much, you know? So we spent some time really discussing, okay, what is reasonable to allow somebody to make a repair to your septic system? Now, why this is a big deal is that we have mandates from council that we're not going to do any new septic systems. We have a requirement that if you're within two hundred feet of sewer, that you're going to connect on. And so this is for an application where you are within two hundred feet, but the cost is too, so significant. So the, the amount we came up with was fifteen percent of the value of the building and the structure. So that's still, you know, quite a bit, but it gets more in the ballpark of, like, okay, we think this is doable versus not doable, so. It's just two. We also like, when, going back to that one, to verify how much it costs to make that connection, we require three bid estimates and so we'll look at them and they're usually in the, the same ballpark. So it's not just, you get one guy saying like, oh, it's, you know, two hundred thousand dollars and then everybody else is like, no, it's twenty-five thousand. So we do have some checks and balances. So the next one is, when we're maintaining our step and grinder systems, we have a giant backer truck and I think it's like thirty-eight feet long, is that right? And it does not turn well and you need to have a place to put it. It's, it's a really big vehicle. So if you ever want to look at it, you can get onto the guidelines and look at our details. We have a picture of one in there. It gives you the turning radius and all the specs on the, the backer truck. So what we're finding is that when we're doing maintenance, we have to have places to put this. And one, not impede traffic and so, and also be able to get in there. So what we require when we're, we're doing our plan reviews is we make them give us turning movements through like apartment complexes or tight neighborhoods and showing that you can get through there. And then the other thing that we're requiring is you have to have a location to have this sitting there so that we can actually maintain your tanks. So what we're talking about on this is like not so much individual tanks, but whenever you're looking at, you know, lift stations or the bigger step tanks, where we're going to be there quite a while, then you want to have a place that you can pull off and service those tanks. So.
So I just want to thank y'all. Backer truck showed up outside my house when I was in the middle of a Zoom meeting and I got four drains at my intersection, so it was, it was fun.
Okay, next to our fuel stations and trash enclosures. So you'll see recently, we just did like an Arco station on the corner of Marvin and Martin, but we do do gas stations every once in a while. And so what you have to do is when you have the, the fueling area, you have to have it covered and the area underneath the fueling area has to be sloped in to collect anything that is like gas or anything that falls underneath that area. But it also has to be sloped away to make sure that like the stormwater doesn't go in there. So when you drive up, if you ever, you know, are bored, notice that it kind of rises up when you come out and then it usually slopes down in the middle, so they'll catch that. So that's what this is talking about is that you have to have these areas designed to capture the, any spillage underneath the canopy, but prevent stormwater from going in there. Same thing happens with trash enclosures. We're seeing more and more that apartment complexes are, are asking for their trash enclosures outside to be connected to sewer. And the same thing, if it's raining all the time, you have to keep it covered so that, you know, it's not going to go in there, because we don't allow, you know, in the city of Lacey, there's not mixed storm and sewer. So it's all just sewer going to lock. So that's what these are talking about is you have to have a covered area over it to prevent it from getting stormwater into it.
So Tom, is the, the trash enclosure where sewer connection is needed, is that at the option of the developer that wants that? Oh, it's not a city requirement?
No, it's not. In fact, I'm usually, because then you start thinking about the cover over it and you think about how the garbage company gets in there to, yeah. And it's like, I don't know, I, I've had more arguments with people wanting to put them in rather than requiring them. So the places where you'll usually see them required is like grocery stores and all that, but they usually have their own separate area and they have those connected because of the squeezings that come out of the garbage from over there, you know, compacting it, so, anyway. I'm trying to make it exciting. Yep, the next one is page fifty-six. So going back to lift stations, so for each of our lift stations, we have to secure them. And so what we have is we're, we have requirements here for what that, the fencing and the gates look like. So you need to have a twenty-foot wide gate, again, to get the big backer truck in there and any other vehicles. And then you're going to have a six-foot tall power, black power coated, uh, high-security Palisade steel fence, so. Nate can give us all the specifications on that, but, but anyway, it's just, you know, that's the fencing that you go around it and that way we'll make sure that all of our stuff is secure, so.
So Tom, do you want to, just planning commission, do you kind of understand the difference? You, you step right into like discussions about like step systems and grinder systems and lift stations and those kinds of things. Do you kind of generally understand what those things are?
We watched one go in on Willamette.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I just want to make sure before you get too far into this. Okay, good, okay, cool.
Then the next one.
It looks beautiful, by the way, it did all the finishing.
Is this the one on?
On Willamette?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, it's a stunning new installation, I mean.
Is that nineteen?
That's the replacement, I guess nineteen, yeah.
Okay, did you, did you do that one?
No, I'm not that good.
Anyway, we're going to sixty-nine.
Is that the group out of Pualat that did that? Some group, some vendor out of Pualat was part of that. Yeah, remember the trucks.
Okay, this one I can't, I have most of it down, but this one, we currently, we're working on, a lot of our projects are in the UGA, okay? So this, again, this document not only dictates what you're doing for step and water in the city, but also UGA. So we just got through with a, a project called Manor House, or designing it, okay? So with Manor House, you have really small lots and you have step tanks. And so we have to figure out where on the site can you put these, you know? So we worked really closely, you know, it was a lot of help from all of our step guys, it was John and Paul Jacoby and Carl Danielson and then Brandon was like giving us other criteria with Tom Fay, he's our head for, for step. He does other things too, our, his role title. So anyway, so what we came up with is like step tanks need to be five feet from property lines?
Yep. What's the clarifying question, the difference between a septic and then a step? Is, what is the different?
Okay, yeah, so a septic system is a system that you have on your property. It's usually privately owned and maintained and it has a drain field associated with it. A step is, it's, the acronym is Septic Tank Effluent Pumping System. So what happens is you still have that tank on your site and then the effluent pumps out into the, the line into the street. So rather than going to your drain field, it goes into a line that we own and operate. So, and we also maintain the step tanks once they've been installed and approved, so.
Thank you.
Yep. So anyway, the first place, you, you need to keep it five feet from your property line, but if you have two of them right next to each other, you can go down to one foot. So we looked at him and said, what's the narrowest area we can, you know, put two tanks in and still maintain them or take them out if we had to in the future? So we have to look at now versus the future as well. And so that was one criteria that we came up with. They can't be close, closer to, than five feet to foundations, porches, pier pads, eve of the house, fences or other permanent structures. So this is where I was talking about the step spoon. So the thing that they get in there and work out some of the stuff, they were having problems with getting it too close to the eaves of the houses. So you had to go, okay, what, you know, what angle can we get in there with and actually get our work done? And so the, the width or the distance we came up with was five feet from, from the eve of the house and the foundation, so. Closest edge of the riser of the tank shall be located seven feet from the house of the foundation. Again, just keeping it so that you can get into it and have the proper access. They can't be in fenced areas, that's kind of an obvious thing because if they put it behind. Yeah, we can't get in there and then if you have kids, dogs or anything in the back, no, we, we can't get in there. And that also goes for our step panels. So the panels are, we use to turn them on and off and they can't be back there because it's, it's too hard for us to coordinate, you know, everything and really go out there and do our, our maintenance, so. They need to be three feet from the driveway. The new tanks now are either made out of fiberglass or they're made out of a, a plastic material. So neither one of them are rated to have cars drive on them. So then when we did the, the ones for Manor House, some of them, we had to have them put curbs in because they were too close and we didn't want somebody to veer off their driveway and be driving on top of the tanks, so. Then they can't be located in the joint utility trench along every piece of property. Like you have your right of way and then the next ten feet is the joint utility trench. That's your, usually where your cable, your gas, your electric, all that goes in there. So you don't want to take room away from that for having a tank in there, so it has to be placed outside of there. And then we kind of recovered this, but they need to be in the front yard, so, anyway.
Those are very small lots, I guess.
They are, and, and one of the, the, you know, that's a whole nother discussion is like, do we want, do we want lots that small? And so that's where you guys come in, where, you know, not necessarily for these standards right now, but for future thoughts, I mean, what do we want for?
Tom, have you had that conversation about the challenges with these small lots, that they don't work?
Have I had?
Yeah, with the.
No. No, we haven't.
Would you like to hear about the challenges?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Make sure to, make sure you did pick up on the microphones, we got people at home and, and stuff too.
I'll just tee this off and then there's people like Roger and John that can explain the challenges. But you can only fit so much on a lot.
Right.
These have to go in the front yard to be efficient for operation and maintenance to maintain. Roger's the wastewater operations supervisor. And he can tell you the challenges with maintaining. John can tell you the challenges with the installation, where we've had some real coming to Jesus meetings with developers who have put in the foundation for their homes and their driveways and everything. And then literally there's not enough room for a step tank. And they say, well, just put it in the driveway. Well, you can't do that because then when Roger's crew's got to go maintain it, there's probably going to be a car park there. And, and plus with the equipment, you don't want it right up next to a vehicle because you don't want the hoses and everything else interfering with it. But it, but it, it's a big challenge. And I don't know, Roger, if you want to elaborate or John, if you want to elaborate on the challenges.
We're just holding up in general road, it's not traffic. Yeah. Garage doesn't come in, fire doesn't come in, nobody comes in. For us to try to give a notification the day we're going to come there, we are running, we responded failures, but we have a preventive maintenance program. But in order to tell somebody we're going to be there that day, it doesn't matter, so. As the lots get smaller, the streets also get smaller and they, which means people park in the street and then we're running hoses like the fire department around or trying to get through somebody. We haven't had to go through somebody's window yet, but we'll just move on, but that's literally what you're looking at. There's no accident, so as we advance the size of lot, more people, more cars, no accidents.
And step systems are pretty big maintenance, and they take a lot, but they're pretty maintenance. It's just what they fail or every what, five years a good maintenance?
Generally around eight years, I think, if they're looking at that, so. They're set up at the beginning at eight block, right, as, as we run. We try to keep them developed altogether, but it starts getting moved around so we can, so. That's all that's got to be considered is we have the trucks are made for why we not only have a pump, but we have a service van that comes running and so.
Hey, John, do you want to speak to the challenges you've had on installations?
The challenges that we have for installation is that we've stepped away from having concrete tanks because of the gases will eventually eat out the concrete. So we went to using like a high-density polyethylene or fiberglass that lasts many, many years. But in the evolving of those tanks, the tanks have become bigger footprints. So instead of having a seven-foot tank, now you get a twelve-foot tank trying to fit it in a six-foot hole. And nobody thinks about this, the tanks have evolved and gotten bigger over time. So it becomes a real challenge when they put in the driveway the foundation and I show up and it's like, it doesn't fit.
Right.
And so in terms of ADUs, if they're in an area where step tanks exist and it needs a step tank, it's probably not going to get approved because we can't have step tanks in a side yard or a backyard because we can't get the equipment in.
Yeah.
And the other thing about ADUs, you know, they're, yeah, it's a great low-income option, but communities I've talked to where they've gone full-fledged into it, parking is a nightmare.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we have these maintenance responsibilities and there's no place for our operations equipment to go, that's unacceptable. I mean, we don't want to create a scenario that we can't serve.
And we definitely have only forty-one hundred step. We have about thirteen hundred other volumes that are coming in the next few years, so. It's about being able to maintain and efficient and keep costs down, keep the sewer rates down.
What's the, what's the life cycle as far as like how long the step tanks? How long does step tanks last until you have to replace them? And then the second would be like grinder pumps, the same question there as well.
Step systems, we haven't had to replace any tanks yet. I do have life cycle costs for what cost to average or close to maintenance. Grinders are run to fail, they're a little bit higher cost, just because it's, we pull one pump out, four or five thousand dollars, put another one in, but overall, it's, I mean, it's being tracked and looked at.
What was that expression used, run to fail? Is that, can you say what, more about that? What does that mean?
A run to fail is, is it, it just works and then one day it doesn't work, so we respond.
Oh, so there's no warning that it's slowing down or struggling?
We have not done any preventive maintenance on them. Statistically, through donation, you don't have to do that. We have not done any prevented maintenance on them. Um statistically, through donation, you don't have to do that. Um but however, we have found doing commercial systems this year. That it's beneficial to do some type of preventing maintenance on a commercial system that's heavier than news. We used to be run the fail on step systems, but for not longer back in ninety eight, we're about a twenty eight percent rate. We're currently at about five, so.
So one of the things, you know, just talking about this is, you know, the the policy decisions around. You know, expanding step systems and grinder systems further. Particularly into the urban growth area, I think is where most of these systems exist, were made a long time ago. And, you know, now you're starting to see some of the ramifications of those decisions, not only in the how many have been installed. But, you know, some of the maintenance challenges. And then, you know, everything at some point, every piece of infrastructure that is ever installed in the city will have to be replaced at some point. And so every, whatever it is, I hear six thousand.
What do we have? Six thousand systems? Six thousand? Four thousand one hundred? Four thousand.
Okay, forty one hundred step tanks, each one of those at some point. Would would need to be replaced. And so that means the city is going into forty one hundred yards and replacing those. And then, you know, the cost is borne by the by the rate pairs. So, you know, the the it. It's all of us that pay, you know, a sewer rate, a sewer bill that would would ultimately pay um for that. So, you know, one of the things that that might come out of this, um and, you know, we can look into this a little bit further. But is, you know, should the recommendation uh of, you know, the development guidelines come from the planning commission? Is maybe recommending that the council look at the policy around the proliferation of of step and grinder systems. Um and, you know, obviously the cat's out of the bag. We got a lot of them already. Um but maybe at this point, we say, okay, you know, we've got, we've got to that limit where, you know, financially, we're concerned about the future of this. Because we have to maintain and then, you know, eventually replace, is that, you know, our policy becomes we we only. Except for limited circumstances, do gravity systems. So, you know, typical gravity sewer is basically where it goes. From your house into the main line through gravity and then it's sent to a lift station, which does the work of the gravity. In that case, basically it'll lift it up and send it down the line, which has, you know, that's a different cost, much lower cost for the city long term. Than a step system. The, you know, steps systems are advantageous where you have. Um, you know, where you have, you're able to send lines further afield. So that's why they particularly exist on urban growth areas. That they're farther away from gravity lines and you don't have to extend gravity lines that far. They also exist around our lakes where we have topographical challenges. Um and there there is some benefit there. I mean, I, you know, it's probably better that somebody be on a step system near a lake than on a septic system, for example. Um but, you know, it may be something that especially given this discussion and given, you know, the future of this. It's just that, you know, the the planning commission maybe recommends to the council relooking at the policy. As far as, you know, how step is extended, you know, any further or is it limited to gravity? Because the lots, I can tell you right now, the lots are not gonna get any bigger.
Right.
No, the push is to, you know, grab people in as much as possible on small lots and and get more housing. And ADUs are sort of been touted as, you know, the solution, the solution from the skies. It's gonna solve all our problems. Not true, you know.
I think I was listening to city council. I think they said that there's only been like thirty one ADUs built in the last few years.
That's right.
So it's not like a proliferation of ADUs in Lacey.
It's not, but you know, the the what what we'll be doing is opening it up for more. In in the future, if somebody would want to do that. So, you know, we have to anticipate that at some point, there could be somebody with a triplex. Or a fourplex and two ADUs that would want to take advantage of that. And state law is mandating that the not be the kind of the new standard. That's gonna be the the requirement after June of twenty twenty six.
But the other side of it is the developers want to get as much as they can out of the land they have. So they're gonna make small lots and narrow streets and, you know. Create a problem.
Well, it all goes back to the cost of the dirt.
Right.
So can I embarrass you, Jeff?
Why not?
So there is a lot more to step and grinder and gravity decisions. Um economics is a big part of it. We don't allow uh grinders and steps. Just because it's less expensive. A lot has to do with topography. And it's undesirable to have thirty foot deep sewer lines and other things that would be more accommodating, you know. If you had to not allow step and want to gravity or more lift stations, which are way more expensive. So all this is addressed during the comprehensive plan process. And basin plans are put together, like this is gonna be a gravity basin, this is gonna be a step basin. And so there was a developer who in based on the comprehensive plan. Where it's required to install gravity. And they came in to us many times and we told, and they they didn't want to go gravity. They wanted to go step. We said, no, you are in a gravity basin. And we will not support step because it would be more expensive to the rate pair. And so this is where Jeff Gabman became god to me and my. It's uh, you know, Jeff, you know, stood up for us and said, you know, I mean, in his day job and his role. You know, he heard all these various things, but but the cost of their installation does not dictate our, you know, deviation from our company. And so, so yeah, that's where Jeff became god to me. You haven't even turned red yet.
No, it I mean, it it was in that particular case, it wasn't fair to the existing rate pairs. To subsidize that developer. And and it wasn't even about that they couldn't do their project. It was, they could do this many units, but if they had that system, then they could do this many. Yeah, yeah. You embarrassed me. So Scott started this with, you know, talking about the science of lots and everything. The other thing, going back to chapter four, remember we had um the conversation about where the trees go too? How everything fits on the lot. So I think you're gonna see in the future, we're probably gonna have some detailed conversations. Um like some of this stuff, I think would be, like Scott said, vetted out like through sewer comprehensive plan updates. But I think you may see internally for lots and all that, we need to come up with a better plan. On how we make stormwater, street trees, sewer, water, all that stuff work for for the lots, you know. With ever shrinking lots that we're dealing with, so. Spencer, did I see you signaling you had something to say?
Yeah, so I was wondering, why is uh the rate pairs the ones subsidizing these step and grinder systems? I understand they're being put in for difficult topography and installations, uh but. It it just seems not equitable to have everybody else bear the cost of one or, you know, one developer, one individual's installation. Could you speak more to that, please?
So rate pairs are not subsidizing this. They would have been in a case I just gave with Jeff. Um but yeah, no, subs, rate pairs are not subsidizing.
If if the city is bearing the cost of servicing these and that is being borne by the people paying the utility. Aren't we then like an insurance pool and everybody is picking up the tab for certain individuals?
So Spencer, in that particular case, it would have required the city council creating a variance for that particular development. And so if they, if they approve, if we approve a step system for that project. City maintains that step system, so that's where all the rate pairs would be subsidizing that project. Whereas a requirement was to go with a gravity system, which would not have had the rate pairs subsidizing that project.
Yeah, so did I miss here earlier in the meeting when you said that when your vector truck has to go out and do this work? That that isn't being borne by increased rates by the citizens paying their utility bill?
I I think it's covered through your your fees, you know. So you have your sewer costs and I think that that is what's paying, like everybody pays their sewer rate. And from that pool of money is where we go out and either do our, anything we have to do on cleaning a gravity sewer line. Or if we're having to do the maintenance on step or grinder systems that we own and operate.
Okay, I missed the part where you s- where they were city owned. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sure, so um all the rate pairs to pay the same sewer bill regardless of.
What system?
How they flush or what they flush into, right? Okay, so, you know, it it's, it's an assumption on my part that because, you know, there's more infrastructure. Associated with a step tank or a grinder, that those over time are going to obviously need to be replaced. And so therefore, that pool of money that all the rate pairs pay into the same amount could possibly rise. As a result of additional maintenance that would be required. I mean, is that, that's not something that's been borne out over time. That's just an assumption on my part that, you know, as those. You know, things need to be replaced, it has to be replaced by something, somebody somehow, and that would be by the rate pair. So I think maybe that's what you're getting at, Spencer, is that it's not necessarily subsidizing development per se. It's it's that there, yeah, it's it's it's, everybody is paying into the same pool maintenance wise. But there may be more maintenance that's needed for the city to provide for things like step tanks and grinder pumps over time than there is for gravity sewer.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've kind of gone sideways, so. Let's get back on track.
Just just to clarify, we have forty eight locations and we have to own the new penny. But we have about a hundred seventy miles of gravity sewer that we own in many. We have twelve people dedicated to the gravity system, four people dedicated, three and a half people to step systems. I mean, third, we have twenty one hundred, twenty one thousand connections and seventy five percent is gravity. So uh the cost is there. I mean, to replace a lift station, you really have two or three or four a year. It averages about two and a half million per lift station. So that's on a twenty five year lifecycle, so we've got that going now. The other year, we're going to be burdened with seven and a half million dollars a year, just really have, not also the other maintenance we have to do. As far as manhole lining, manhole slip lines or main lines are breaking. So they all have their costs. And it's just, we have to put the right application in the right spot. And that's, and we just bear the cost of what that is. I believe overall flatline that everybody pays equally for that service. Um we haven't really seen the difference in that. I do track to find out um what we are paying. It's important to the gravity or your step, so it's something we don't overlook.
Okay, good, right, let's keep going. Okay. And the last one that I have is seventy six. So this is the the, one of the things that we have not a- addressed previously. So um now with ADUs coming into play and you're you're having your single family houses. We had to look at, okay, how many bedrooms can we go send to a step or grinder system? Without it being like a burden to the system and having early failures. So we started looking at those numbers and the the number we came up with was five bedrooms. So I had a, prior to this meeting, I had a conversation with Ryan. It was like, okay, well, how do you come up with bedroom volumes? Stuff like that. And then how we're using the term bedrooms is, and we need to do a little bit more research on. So for a septic system, the county has always used, like, if you talk to them about their septic systems. They're based on bedroom count. So there has to be some kind of flow or volume from that that kind of correlates with. You know, here's how much is coming out of a bedroom, you know. So anyway, um that's what this, we're trying to do here. Is give a a reasonable, you know, volume of or number of bedrooms. That will be going to a step or grinder system. And we were looking at like most houses. Standard houses have like three bedroom house, they're three bedroom houses. And we know that the county considers a ADU as a two bedroom structure. So we're kind of trying to build into, you have a house, you want to put an ADU, you have five bedrooms, you know. So um we may need to give a little bit more of a um a volume, you know, that goes with this. So that it it correlates with, you know, what we're trying to achieve. But we're we're trying to make sure that we're not having more people, more visits out like. So any, we go out every seven years, is that what we're saying? Eight years? So every eight years, we're going out there to do our normal maintenance. So if you're overloading the system, that means we have to go out there more often. More crude, so we need to come up with the right number. So anyway, you may see a little, like a little bit of tweaking on. What this really means, but that's what we're trying to get at here. It all comes down to output per occupant. Yeah, that's right. So, okay, so that's it for the bullet points I had, but I did want to open it up to everybody on. If you guys had any questions, like other questions that you read when you're looking at the changes. And I'd be happy to have my friends help me with the answers. So I'm gonna start this time with Spencer. You got any questions? Okay.
I was kind of curious because I thought that ADUs were mainly targeted more towards the city center. And I thought the step systems were more towards the the um the growth areas.
So state law changed.
So.
And it's changing again.
Are now gonna go all over the.
Basically, an ADU has to be allowed on any single family lot.
Okay. So they have to plan for one point seven five dwelling units per lot, like just giant.
Is there still an exemption if the HOA governing documents prohibit that?
Yeah, so I I can speak to that a little bit. Yeah, so um the the state law is, you know, is changing to basically require those things. But that's precluded by if there are already in place HOA covenants. Um those aren't up to us to enforce. Ultimately, those are up to the HOA. So it'd be up to the HOA to enforce their own rules. My understanding is that that applies essentially retroactively to any development that already has those covenants in place. But any future development is not allowed to put covenants in place to prohibit ADUs in the future.
That was my understanding as well.
Yes.
Is your, if you're already like, yeah.
Already got it, then you're allowed to continue. But if it's i- i- any new development is not allowed to preclude ADUs.
Kind of?
No, I'm just curious when when you, way back at the beginning, we were talking about septic tanks and failure and hooking up to the sewer and all of that stuff. The failure, I'm assuming, is primarily the drain field fails.
It's both. So we see as we see um actually tank failures or drain drain field. So like we're saying, I think the septic tanks have been in the ground a lot longer than any of our step tanks. So you're seeing the cement rot out. And so we looked at anything that was a major failure. And really, the two major failures are drain fields and tanks.
So that, so if your drain field fails in some semi-urban development, you're not gonna find another drain field. I mean, you're gonna have to hook up to the sewer. So if that person has a an assessment, say, of sixteen percent of their value of their property. To hook up to the sewer and their drink and their septic tank has failed. How does that work? Do you say this is not a livable dwelling until you do this? I mean, do they get?
That would fall like, so we work closely with the Thurston County Environmental Health.
Yeah, yeah, I assume Department of Health does.
Yeah, so we work with them. And so what they would look at is primarily, you'd look for a replacement area. If you were over the the, you're at sixteen percent, then you'd look for a replacement area on your lot for your drain field. And what you're, I think, going at is with these smaller lots, you're not gonna have a place for them.
You won't, yeah.
But the the difference on that is that this, we're really looking at existing lots versus what's going in now. All of them are gonna be on sewer, right? So um we're not gonna have the smaller lots that are gonna.
Right, so that, yeah, the ones that are failing are large.
So usually they they can find a place on the on the property somewhere, but anyway.
You have to pump up to it, yeah.
Well, and in the late eighties, nineties, two thousands. Uh the environmental health requirement was if you're building a structure, you had your drain field. Plus you had to have a hundred twenty five percent reserve, yeah.
Yeah. A lot of ways around that.
All right, well, we've got our joint meeting on the eleventh, open house on the twelfth. You guys have a.
All right. Well, we've got our joint meeting on the eleventh, open house on the twelfth. You guys have a song and dance number?
I did, I did want to give kind of like next steps. So what's gonna happen right now is so starting next week, we're gonna go out for public and. Internal review, final review of the document, um, of the changes. So that will happen for about a month. And then I'm hoping to be at the, uh, city council to give them a briefing. They haven't heard anything about the changes that are happening. And then resulting, after that meeting, that will give us our next steps. But we're hoping to give you kind of a, a briefing back on what the council said on March twelfth. And then if we can get everything resolved, then have a hearing on March twenty sixth. So that's the, that's kind of the hopeful timeframe. Um, so, um, anyway. And then I also wanted to say thank you to all you guys for showing up, the support and answer questions. I appreciate it. And I think that's all I have for this.
All right. I'm gonna call the meeting and turn. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, Spencer.
I mean, just so you're all aware, I'm gonna speak for Roger here. If any of you want to go out and clean a step tank. You can find out what it's like to use that shovel and break through the ground.